Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutville Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 17, 2020. And if we could have Roll Call.
This chair will take your ultimate.
Yep, so Commissioner Wetron.
Present.
Vice Chair Wydilla.
Here.
Commissioner Prickett.
Sorry, here.
Here.
Sheriff Staffington.
Here.
Commissioner Glance.
Present.
Commissioner Mamoney.
Yeah.
And alternate member Allen.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will have pledged allegiance and those of us in the Kellag Room will stand. I pledge allegiance.
We just to the flag of the United States of America, which stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Multiple narratives.
All right, is there any public wishing to comment? Any on Zoom, any written comments received?
No written comments received and for the record, no other members of the public are in attendance tonight in the room.
Okay, did everyone receive a copy of the minutes from the May 28 meeting?
Yes.
And so do you have any corrections?
I have a tiny one on page five, fourth paragraph that starts with Ms. Glance. Second line, it says she asked it the criteria and I said it should be if.
Yeah, I have.
Okay. Any other corrections?
Yes, Mr. Chair. One on page seven, very, very, very brief is page seven is the middle paragraph. Let's start with Mr. Mamone, the second half of the paragraph says, Mr. Mamone asked if we acquire a permit for a temporary sign. And there is a comma and then there should be if not to be added. How will we know that it's either temporary or not? So it should be added if not after the word sign mid paragraph.
If the words if and not.
That is correct, if not.
If not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everyone okay with adding those two words in at that point? If you're not, I think that's good. Okay, any other corrections to the minutes from May 28?
Comment.
Yes.
This is Commissioner Will Cox. We have the one that Sandy pointed out, so surprised two of us caught that typo. My comment is under Will, under Roll Call showing Commissioner Allen absent. I don't think Mr. Allen is technically a commissioner. And also, I don't think alternates are necessarily expected to be attending or required to attend, so I'm not sure he should be considered absent if he's not expected to be there.
That's a good point. Yeah, it is, maybe we could just put in if the alternate is present, we could just list them. That would be okay?
Or yeah, hyphenated or presented.
And just not point out if they're not there.
Right.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, sir. And with that, we have a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, this is Ms. Prickett. I move that we accept or approve the minutes for May 28, 2020 as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from May 28, 2020 as amended. All those in favor signify.
Aye.
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 Okay. Now we're into the big show. And. Okay. Tonight, we have a public hearing on case file LU 0006 dash 2020 13 Bridges. Conditional use permit, a Type 3 hearing. And before we open tonight's public hearing, I'd like to give you a little history about the Planning Commission and the procedures we'll be following for the matter on the agenda. Planning Commission has appointed seven member volunteer bodies of Troutville State. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutville residents who have been appointed by the City Council. They serve four-year terms, they are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as the Citizen Committee for the review of land use applications and various land use related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision and for other applications, they are simply making a recommendation through the City Council who renders the final decision. Quasi judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutville Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Conference of Plan Development Code or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then opponents, and then any party neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues that are raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open or the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony or criteria for decision making. And as a final note, these hearings are recorded and when you are, if you are planning on testifying, please state your name and address for the record. Okay, before we open the public hearing, I'd like to ask if any members of the commission have any ex parte contact or bias to declare, conflict of interest, anything other than driving by the site?
Nothing.
Anyone? Nobody's nodding their head? Okay, take that as everybody's good. Okay. And with that, we will now open the public hearing for case file LU 0006 dash 2020 13 Bridges. This is a Type 3 hearing and the Planning Commission will be the decision-making body for this application this evening. We can have staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to you and the commissioners. We're going to turn it over to Arini Farrell for a lead-up report.
Evening commissioners, my name is Arini Farrell. I am an associate planner for the city of Troutville. I'm happy to present to you this application. If you have any questions, please let me know towards the end of this presentation and I'd be happy to answer it. If there's questions that I'm unable to answer, then I will defer it to the applicant who is present at this meeting. Okay. So we are here to review the 13 Bridges LLC project, Land Use 006 dash 2020. It's a Type 3 application and a conditional use permit. The property that is attached to this project is 1057 Northwest Corporate Drive. It's just north of I-84 in the industrial, general industrial zone district. The status of it currently is already developed and the surrounding property uses are light industrial and general industrial all around. I do want to note that this specific project is more or less a backtrack. It's the operation has been approved by OLCC and it's been operational since 2016, but they haven't actually gotten the conditional use permit. So this is their way to retroactively get that permit from the state. This is the space. So this conditional use permit is for a marijuana facility, specifically production in an industrial space. It's not proposing a zoning change, it's not proposing any exterior addition and it is also not requesting for expansion specifically for retail or processing in terms of marijuana. The applicable criteria is our mention above. Most of the criteria we're looking at and the findings will be under conditional use today. So the timeline for this project, an application was submitted on March 25th. On April 6th, it was deemed incomplete. After further review of the application and reviewing it with other reviewer entities, we were determined that the missing document was actually sufficient enough. The application was sufficient enough that we didn't need that additional document. So the application is deemed incomplete on May 7th and a notice of application was sent on the 12th. And today is the public hearing. The agency comments for this project is planning, Public Works, Gresham Fire and Multnomah County Transportation. This road itself is not Multnomah County Transportation, but we usually in that general area where this project is located, we would defer some comments to Multnomah County just in case of future impacts to their roads. So the benefits for this application is that it's surrounded by other industrial uses similar to what it is already and the property is already successful. And it's, sorry, there's a typo in there, but it is just obtaining a conditional use permit. We don't really foresee any drawbacks and if there is, please do let us know. These are the standard conditions of approval on our Troutville Development Code that you may or may not add in of this approval or attached with this approval. So we can move ahead to the decision criteria, but before I do that, I do want to check in with you if you have any questions before we go into the findings.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um.
Go ahead.
North of the freeway, how many other marijuana production facilities do we have? I don't need exact close counts.
You don't have that many. I think we only have one that was nearby, the Northwest Dunbar that you had approved last year. And then Chris, that was before my time, if you can, if you have in the top of.
Yeah.
There might be another one.
Yeah, the ones that you have formally approved in the current development code, there's only one other. There was one other one that had come well before in 2015 at about the same time this applicant came in, but they never fulfilled their occupancy for it. So you're only talking at, I believe, currently two, two or three. I'd have to go back and double check.
That's fine. That's fine, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Chair.
Okay, so decision criteria for this A is that the use is listed as a conditional use in the underlying district. This marijuana facility is licensed and authorized under state law and it is under our TDC code. It shall not be located within 1,000 feet of real property, which the site of a public or private school or a public park considered. And because of the location of this area, it's not within that. It well above the 1,000 feet location buffer of any schools and park. B, the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering the size, shape, location, typography, existence of improvements and natural features. This 1057 Northwest Corporate Drive is already a developed industrial parcel. Then the site itself is already paved and all the proposed improvements is attached to a tenant improvement instead of external. So those characteristics are already matching thus of a general industrial parcel. C, all transportation systems for our public facilities, public services related to the proposed developments have or can be improved to have adequate capacity to improve the proposed development at the time of the completion. The applicant did provide a traffic generation estimate which illustrated it meets the capacity required for the site. We had deferred that estimate to Multnomah County Transportation and also our Public Works Department and they had concluded that there are no additional mitigation required. I believe during the time of sending the packets, we were missing one comment from the county about confirmation that there was no additional condition. So the findings that you may have on your findings in your packet may say it was conditionally met because we want it to be safer side, but the criterion is met and there was no conditions proposed by Public Works or Multnomah County Transportation. E, the proposed use will provide adequate open space landscaping and aesthetic design to mitigate any possible adverse effect on surrounding properties and uses. As mentioned, the property is already developed and it meets all the paint, parking and landscaping requirements on the site. The applicant have also expressed that the site has been maintained regularly in terms of landscaping, so we believe that this criterion is met. This additional use doesn't increase employee count by that means, so we don't believe that there is that additional requirement too. Okay, so E, the proposed use as condition will not cause or result in the creation of public nuisance, including but not limited to air, land, water degradation, noise, glare, heat, vibration and other impacts that might be injurious to public health. The property is surrounded by the industrial uses. It is, there's no residential uses nearby. The use itself will not cause any additional public nuisance. At least from our department, we haven't heard any complaints regarding code for, for this use that would be impacting properties. And all the cannabis cultivation for this site will be indoors. So as such, the criterion is met. F, the proposal satisfies the applicable provisions of this code. We have reviewed this applicant's narrative and intent and belief that the applicant have satisfied all the criteria for the Troutville Development Code. Assuming any conditions of approval tied to this application, it is assumed that the criterion is met. So we do recommend approval with conditions and the conditions are outlined in the findings of fact. From planning, we are, we are putting a condition of approval for the applicant to get in contact with building division to require any necessary permits to complete their tenant improvement work. Gresham Fire has put four conditions of approval. And that is it for the staff. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, questions for staff?
I have some again, sorry.
Commissioner Glance.
What was there before?
It's been that since 2016. It's been a marijuana facility since 2016.
And how many? Okay, and how many people does it employ? You mentioned something about no change.
I'm sorry, I would defer to the applicant for that confirmation.
Yes, my name is Tim Misselt. Would you like me to state my address?
Yeah, just hold that thought, we'll get to you here in just a second, okay? Thanks.
And that was it for me, thanks.
Okay, anyone else with questions for staff?
Yes, Chair, Mr. Chair, a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mamoney.
Thank you. The first question, maybe it's a trivial one, but for those of us who are not much involved in this kind of business, what is a marijuana facility in lame term? What, what, what does it do? What happens there? Are the customer coming in and out, there's operation and, and so that if you could. And the second question is, the statement if understood was that per the Troutville Development Code, marijuana facility is, is, is a general industrial use and I wanted to confirm that. And, and if so, given the nature of the business, why not a commercial? And that's it, thank you.
I can answer that for you and probably Tim can provide more clarification, but marijuana facility in this scope is the cultivation of cannabis. Is this application itself doesn't refer to retail or the production in the processing aspect of it? So the facility itself, from my understanding based on the narrative, it's the cultivation of that and the applicant would like to move forward to do a tenant improvement on their existing facility. The second question that you have about general industrial, it is in the general industrial and general industrial allows these facilities as long as under a conditional use permit, which is why we're here.
So if you are, my, my, which is follow up, if, if it is actually a cultivation of marijuana, it, it really matches amidst the definition of, of industrial, it's manufacturing.
Yes.
Marijuana. I would like also the applicant if he can confirm all these things, thank you.
Question.
Commissioner Wetron.
Yeah, so in the staff report, it says there's no plans to expand to retail or processing. If they decide to change that in the future and do some processing actually there, do they have to come back for a different permit, change something, make somebody aware? Okay, I just want to make sure that we're.
It's under a different category for processing, so we'll review it again as either modification to this application or a new application altogether.
But they would have to come back in front of us?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Will Cox, please.
Yes, my question is on the Public Works Report, page 2, item 8. The last sentence reads, "The applicant will be required to cure any existing defects in the public sidewalk on the street frontage of the property as a condition of the tenant improvement building permits." I would think the landlord would be responsible for that sort of thing rather than the tenant.
That, that is a condition that they're going to put forward when they move on to the building department permit, permitting process for a tenant improvement, so I would defer that to more clarification on that time. I can't. That would be Public Works, that would be.
Basically, the, the property owner and the tenant are both tied into this application. And I believe the property owner had to sign the application, correct? Yeah, the property owner is, is aware of this, they signed the application.
Okay.
That gets upheld during the building plan review and inspection process.
Yeah, because this is more referring to the use of the facility itself. So they would like to put this condition as when they get the tenant improvement part of this application, so it's not attached to this application, that, that comment was a condition.
And I have a question.
Okay.
On page 3, conditions for Gresham Fire.
Yeah.
Door hardware must meet the requirements of 2019 OFSC and 2019 OFC and burglar bars and safety deterrent mechanisms will not be allowed. Is that typical?
I mean, they, they did cite a Oregon fire code section there. I think in this particular case of this type of business, the other thing that they have to be mindful of from the fire perspective, and that again will be ironed out during the building plan review, is that the Oregon Liquor Control Commission may have also standards as well for security. So those types of comments can be placed in there, yes, but those comments may also be not applicable on further review in coordination with the state agency.
Yeah, I'm just concerned because that deterrent mechanisms, that's really cutting a pretty wide swath that they will not be allowed.
Those, those types of standards are typical of a lot of processing facilities, given their propensity to blow up. So they may be taking an extra precaution and labeling marijuana facilities in that same scope. You can try, you know, if, if you wish to consider removing that, that, striking that comment, that's fine. What I would advise you though is that they might still make that same comment after they've gone through the tubes or the building plan review and then it would be incumbent upon our staff to help navigate that and address their concerns with that with what the OLCC may require, let alone what the building owner and the tenant may seek to do because they probably have reasons for providing security.
Yeah, I'm just not used to seeing that.
Yeah.
From Gresham Fires, just wondering if they got into locksmith business or going on there.
No, I, I think it, it has more to do with, with their concerns, just heightened concerns around marijuana, but that's really more for processing, I would argue than, than for.
Because usually they can find a way in.
Burglar bars are a little tougher.
Yeah. Okay. If that's it for staff. Questions for them? This time, we will ask to hear from the applicant, who I believe is Tim Misslet.
Yes, hi, my name is Tim Misselt. Address is 3213 Southeast 64th Avenue in Portland, Oregon 97206. And yeah, so pretty much we summed everything up in the application, but we're an existing business that's been operating in Troutville since 2016. And you know, we've had a lot of ups and downs and during that process, we've almost considered selling or terminating our lease early, but we've been able to turn things around a little bit and we've, we've got a path, we've been able to expand our business and we're requesting to expand and to stay in Troutville and, you know, remain in good standing with the city as we have been since 2016.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can we have Tim confirm the employee count?
Right, I was just going to get to that. Could you confirm the employee count or tell us what that number is?
Yeah, so there's a few categories. So there's two full-time employees and there's. Yeah, so there's a few categories. So there's two full-time employees and there's that work 40 hours roughly each per week. There is two owners that come in probably maybe one or two check-ins per week, myself and Matt. And there is probably about six employees that work one time or one week each month. And they are temporary workers. We intend to add probably one more full to, part-time to full-time staff with this tenant improvement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that someone asking a question? Okay, maybe not. And Mr. Mamoni had a question that I believe was regarding what goes on there.
Yeah, Arini did a really good job describing it, but essentially what we do is we're just farming plants inside. And so it's just, everything is closed loop per se. We have, you know, we take the plants from propagation to full maturity to drying them and processing them to get ready to bring to state licensed retail centers around the state. And so pretty much, you know, we handle everything that has to do with growing the plant. But to confirm as well what was stated before, no processing, we have no intention of doing processing at all at this facility and no retail, so we don't intend on bringing any additional traffic to that part of town.
Okay. And do any commissioners have questions, additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, yes, one brief question for the applicant. Mr. Misselt, you just talked about, if I understood correctly, tentative improvement, tenant improvement. What would that be? What does it amount to?
Yeah, so essentially, in our building, it's a, it's an open span warehouse. And whenever we, the first building permit that we received, I believe in 2016, we built two 20 by 30 rooms. And they were partition walls that went from the floor all the way to the ceiling. What we're proposing to do, and we have these plans already drawn up with our architect, is we're intending to put a second level within the building. And so no exterior changes, just within the building. And so two more 20 by 30 rooms with storage on top. And then there's another space within one of the other rooms. We're going to, we're proposing to put a second level in that as well.
Thank you very much, appreciate.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may again, and I know I'm imposing, but the natural question that comes is all this improvement, where are they? Are they going to be, are they going to be a building permit, a separate building permit that the staff is going to review? Or whether it's supposed to be part of this application? Maybe this is just a line to this application? So what's going to happen? Thank you.
I can answer it, but do you want me to answer it now or?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mamoni, basically, why they're here is in order for the planning staff to sign off on their prospective building permit application, they have to get this approval first.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, Tim. And I guess at this time, is there any testimony?
The record shows no person is in the Kellogg Room and staff has not received any additional testimony.
Okay, none? Okay, so if everyone's okay with it, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move that we close the public hearing on file number LU-006-202013bridgesLLC.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all the hearing is closed. All right.
All right, this is the transcription of who made the motion and who seconded for the record.
Commissioner Glenn.
And I believe Commissioner Frickett seconded.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't know that there's much to discuss. It seems pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, it's too easy.
Making up for some of those ones that aren't.
That's right.
I agree.
Okay, someone want to move this along?
I got a question first on paragraph C. This is Mark Wydilla. Paragraph C, is the criterion met or is it conditionally met?
I'll defer to Ms. Farrell. I think she was saying that we had not received this county at the time we finished out.
Yeah, so it's met. We thought that the county would put a condition. From that, they are not putting in that condition.
So we'll edit this to say criterion is met.
Yep, and I'll be sending you the modified.
Any other questions, sir?
Nope.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
So it seems to me that the area in question handles this business well. I don't get a chance to vote on this, but I favor it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Motion, anyone?
I would move approval of finding a fact with the the conditionally removed from paragraph C.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so this is for the finding of fact. And we're removing the word conditionally from paragraph C.
Mr. Chair, for the record, can you confirm the motion and second it?
I certainly can. Motion was by Commissioner Wydilla, and I believe the second was Commissioner Glenn. All right. Any questions on the motion? Okay, so this would be one of two.
Okay.
Let's call a roll, please.
I think you're muted, ready?
Okay, hold on. In the middle of me updating the findings before I lost it.
I can take a roll if you'd like, somebody.
Okay.
Commissioner Frickett.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitton.
Yes.
Commissioner Mamoni.
Yes.
Commissioner Glenn.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Wydilla.
Yes.
Chair Sabinson.
Yes. Okay, that passes. And now we're looking for a motion for final order.
Thank you.
Okay, can addition?
Mr. Chair, go ahead. Go ahead, Mark.
I would move approval of final order decision and the conditions of approval of the issue before.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wydilla, seconded by Commissioner Frickett for approval of final order decision and conditions of approval for case file LU-0006-2020. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Frickett.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitton.
Yes.
Commissioner Mamoni.
Yes.
Commissioner Glenn.
Who? Me? Yes. Didn't hear it, sorry.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Wydilla?
Yes.
Chair Sabinson.
Yeah, okay, that passes. Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good night.
You too. Moving right along to the second feature.
A moment, Mr. Chair, get the script up.
So as promised, we're updating you on some of the county's tenant committee's work. This is going to end up in your lap here pretty soon.
Just double checking before we get started, can everyone see the PowerPoint slideshow? It should say Town Center Plan Update on your screen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I just need to update it because it says assistant planner for me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I demoted you. Arini Farrell is most certainly the associate planner. My apologies on that.
There's something I need to know.
We were going to talk to you, you know.
Yeah, secrets, secrets aren't fun. Sorry about that, Arini.
Quite serious.
No, we do want to, don't worry. So we do, obviously, I'm presenting at the moment, but really, there should be co-preservations by Marley, Arini, and the Town Council Committee as a whole, because this is a very large effort that's been undergoing now for coming up on the third year fall. But this is a major update to our Town Center Plan. Tonight, I'm going to try to give you a comprehensive update. A big section of it will be devoted to updating you on the activities that we're doing in our urban renewal area. But then also, I will want to focus in on some expected issues that this planning commission can expect to be part of at some point here in the next six months in particular, but continuing on into 2021 and 2022 as we start to implement and roll the plan out. So again, tonight, we're going to talk about some background information. We will focus on the urban renewal area. You will hear a phrase called the confluence. That is going to be a marketing term that is utilized for the city-owned portions of the urban renewal area. We'll walk through two activities in particular that we established a basic development concept with the Town Center Committee with some basic expectations that have emerged from that. This information was also shared, by the way, with the City Council last night through the Urban Renewal Agency.
Share with the Urban Renewal.
Urban Renewal as a role as Urban Renewal Agency Board members. We will talk about some shifting roles that we will be doing as a city and then as a staff to respond to getting this plan out the door and actually keep it in action. And we'll talk again about future amendments and long-range planning implications for you. So even though this is a district plan, we're talking about the Town Center, the genesis from this actually is from regional planning, and it stems from the Metro 2040 Growth Concept, which was established in the 1990s. And there are basically three categories which affect our Town Center. One is what they call Town Centers, and they provide services to tens of thousands within a two to three mile radius. Town Centers are very much like Troutdale, or Sherwood, or Oregon, or actually Gladstone. These are smaller suburban areas, but they also include in-town neighborhoods within the city of Porcell, such as St. John's, Hollywood, things like that. Then there's a concept called Main Streets. They are within Town Centers typically. They are similar, but they are traditional commercial identity, but on a smaller scale with a strong sense of the immediate neighborhood. So, and then we also have corridors, which are streets that serve as major transportation networks for people and goods. All three components are actually included in this plan. So a lot of times you hear the word Town Center, is that interchangeable with downtown? Not quite. If you're thinking about downtown, downtown is a component of the Town Center. Neighborhood within, it really is more like a Main Street. Town Center includes also the peripheral residential areas that help to immediately serve that downtown area. The Troutdale Town Center, again, was called out of the 2040 Growth Concepts for those three. And we developed our first Town Center Plan back in 1998, and it served as a pretty good steering wheel for a number of years, but it's also now passed its shelf life. It is a 20-year-old document, and it is time for a refresh. And the City Council determined that they wanted to do that back in 2017. They created a Town Center Committee to run for the length of the project to update it. The first committee steps were really public outreach efforts. This was done through surveys, through public open houses that we had. There were a multitude of opportunities for the public to provide feedback, and we'll cover that briefly. From that feedback, the committee then established visions, or a vision statement for the Town Center, which you'll see momentarily. As the discussions were going on, it was clear that there were several critical properties or several critical corridors that needed to be considered. And we created what we call Opportunity Sites and had discussions on those in late 2019. We're currently in the draft mode of the plan, so we're getting very close to wrapping it up, and we're anticipating approval this fall. While we've been working on this plan, there have been some concurrent projects that have occurred, which either will be nested with or complementary to the Town Center Plan. We did an economic analysis in 2018 that was tied with a Main Streets on Aldi planning efforts. So it looked at three cities' economic situations. We did a community branding exercise, which several of you participated in in late 2019, early 2020. The result of that, one of several dozen brand identifiers has come out of it. Very important for us to help establish placemaking identity for our Town Center. And then we have ongoing right now a site suitability and code audit analysis. I believe we presented a little bit of that information to you at the last meeting as far as what that effort was within the Main Streets on Aldi Project. That's ongoing, and that is a complementary effort. We had intended this summer to do a downtown parking study, but a little thing called COVID-19 had ulterior motives. So this was not this summer to be studying a parking, doing a parking study. So that has been deferred or delayed for the time being. I will, by the way, take a break in the middle of the presentation to answer any questions. If I'll just continue to go along and I'll call for questions about midway through, if that's okay, Mr. Chair. So what actually goes into the Town Center Plan itself? There's a past and present analysis. But we talk about all things land use planning, all things that you guys are familiar with through your statewide land use planning goals. So housing, economic development, parks, transportation, all get considered in this. Think of it almost like a smaller version of your citywide cost plan, but it's really district-focused. But in addition to that, we talk about transportation planning. We talk about socio-economic topics. We also discuss branding and marketing through the concept of placemaking, really creating a good identity for Troutdale's Town Center. And we talk about how do you implement some of these goals and fulfill a vision for the Town Center by 2040. Because of the virus situation, the committee has kind of elected, not necessarily to completely punt, but certainly to be mindful of that we don't know everything at the moment, what this virus may change, short-term or long-term. However, there are some immediate implementations that we can take, some initial steps. In particular, steps on creating an economic development role with the city, which was effectively endorsed when the City Council passed the budget for the city last week for next fiscal year. And what we'll talk about a little bit more at length tonight, which is the exciting stuff, are the opportunity sites and corridors, specifically the URA, and then there's 12 other sites around the Town Center. So let's put it to a map. Here is the boundary of the Town Center area. And these boundaries were defined by Metro well over 25 years ago. So when you apply the roads to it, you can see that we're talking about an area basically stretching from Edgefield to the west, to the Sandy River to the east, and then from the top of Buckton Hill, up by the elementary school on the south, all the way up to the freeway on the north, including the outlet malls, interestingly. And if you were just placing some geographic identifiers, here's some labels for you that shows you the neighborhoods and some more obvious locations. So again, we talked earlier about, um, how a town center vision is going to be the driving force in a lot of the decision-making, and the town center vision was derived from two years of public input, survey, and feedback. What it did, that public input really did what they call a SWOT analysis, a Strength, Weakness, Opportunity, and Threat Look. What are the strengths of our town center? What are the weaknesses, et cetera? So taking that bit of information and taking what people truly communicated on that, we were able then to go through a couple nights' exercises and really hone in on a vision. And we wanted it to be forward-thinking, because this is, much like the previous plan, a 20-year look ahead to 2040. Every decision or implementation strategy that comes out of this plan has to reflect back to this vision. It has to make sense. And the vision is just simply this: By 2040, the town center will preserve a small-town feel while becoming the most vibrant, scenic, and historic hub in the region, a place where families thrive, businesses prosper, and visitors return. That key phrase, "small-town feel," was probably the most common refrain that we heard over and over and over again, as far as what people liked about the town center and Troutdale in particular, and what they hope to somehow maintain, while acknowledging that growth pressures around us will make it very hard. So how do you do it, and how do you do it responsibly from a development perspective? And I think the approach we're landing on is to create and establish what we call Opportunity Sites, which are the 12 boxes that you see here in yellow, uh, with yellow outlines. And, uh, in addition, the 13th one, which is the urban renewal site, which is just off the map, that is effectively the outlets and the city-owned properties to the east, which we'll be talking about, uh, at length. Again, the Opportunity Sites are where you can make and try to correct your larger investments and your larger developments impact, because these develop, these Opportunity Sites have transformative effects for the town center. If you're able to try to coordinate and synet those developments into those areas, it alleviates then the pressure for redevelopment or inappropriate out-of-scale development in the already-built environment. You don't want, you know, especially as you guys know with the Planning Commission, the prospects of House Bill 2001 should be scary, because it could lead to developments that might not be in line or coordinated with what you want. So if you're able then to figure out ways to encourage development into these Opportunity Sites, uh, then you you might be able to have a higher level of success of maintaining that small-town feel. In doing so, then, it also helps the city re-uh, frame how public investment, as far as making any street improvements or corridor-based improvements, they can be tied then with that development strategy. So it, uh, it it really helps the city define its next 20 years of public investment for streets, utilities, and so forth. It doesn't become a scattershot exercise where we are being responsive to development. We are being proactively planning for it. And the idea of corridor investment in particular is an interesting one, because you can say, "Oh, we want to expand travel choice." Well, what on earth does that mean? And I think you you have to boil it down to some more basic questions. And the ones that kept coming up was, would you let your 12-year-old child ride their bike alone through the town center? If you live just east of Edgefield in one of those townhomes, would you let your 12-year-old ride their bike down to Glen Auto Park? A number of people said, "No way." But a number of people 40 years ago, they said, "When I was a kid, I would do that all the time." Well, that's the whole spirit and intent. If you're trying to create that small-town feel and preserve it, that's, you know, emblematic of what a small town should feel like, where we feel comfortable that our children can get around town. It, uh, it works on the opposite end of the age spectrum, too. How will an 82-year-old person get around town? Can you truly age gracefully and have all the amenities you need to live out every facet of life in your community where families thrive? That ties back to the vision. And then again, we're not soothsayers, and we can't predict the future, but we also want to know how automation and other future trends can affect transportation in particular, because there's a lot to consider about it. Uh, we, there's a lot we don't know. There's a lot of predictions, but we're not sure. So the plan has to be at least flexible enough to to think about that and accommodate those changes and not pretend that they're not going to happen. What we did for each Opportunity Site is we assigned what we call just general land use categories. So we're not saying, you know, Site 5 must be a supermarket with a deli. We're just saying that we think that commercial service for this particular site is a good thing. And we've done this exercise for all 12 sites and the urban renewal area, and that was based on, uh, committee feedback, but also public perceptions as far as when we showed public images of these sites, what did they think would be best in that location? And we tried to match it with reality, uh, from an economic sense, but also from an analysis that that the committee had done. So this was kind of the rubric that we came up. So that's not to say that, for instance, the, um, Sarudi Track West Site 4 couldn't have mixed use. It just said, "Most people believe medium-density residential is probably a more preferable land use." But it doesn't, it, it, you know, if somebody came in with a mixed-use, uh, development proposal, it could be copacetic. But for somebody to come in with an industrial one, it would not at all fit the spirit and intent of the town center. So in that way, we're not telling people what to build. We're telling people what the expectation of the community was during this point in time when when this analysis was created. So as we're working with these Opportunity Sites, then we look and through the plan, and we try to show how these sites can come to fruition and show some images. We're not over-engineering at this point, but we're just trying to show what could be possible, uh, for for the purpose of of how this could be improved. So this is the first site right here. This is the Deco Park area. Uh, right here is the, at the top of the screen is the Visitor Center, the future home of the Bike Hub Project, and where the trail that will connect under the railroad to the Sandy River waterfront will will empty out. This is a critical piece. This is where the city's envisioning its visitors to stop by, especially on bikes. But it's also not the the most pedestrian-friendly location. You've got a pretty strong curve. Well, if your, if your goal is to try to increase the safety and improve the experience, especially for visitors, maybe you have to consider a three-way stop. So the idea here, for instance, would be you could show a rendering that shows how a three-way stop could could look and how you can incorporate placemaking to better improve that site. So this is just an example. This doesn't mean the city will build this or work with the county to build this. This is just showing how you can fulfill your vision through very high-level concept design and then create a plan of action and a prioritization for when and how you might be able to accomplish that. Another track that we looked at here, for instance, this is Track 3, we call it the Herford Track, northwest corner of 257 and the historic highway. Most of you know this. This is a very prime interchange. The committee thought that a commercial use or civic use in this location would be really dynamo. So here's an example potentially. This is a, obviously, a modern architectural twist, but this is showing a civic building at the corner with a five-story or four-story hotel right behind it, screened by trees and screened by just how it's, so again, not saying this is what will happen or we will build, but this just provides the inspiration needed to help, uh, entice development opportunity. And again, whether it is ultimately historic architecture or modern architecture, that's not what we're trying to asitate at this point. This is just showing development potential. We'll come back to this property a little bit later here in just a moment. So with that, I'm going to take a quick pause right here before I go into the Confluence, because that's a a pretty big topic, and I'll be happy to go back to any slides or or questions before I dive into that.
Okay. Questions?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Did I miss it? Or how did we come up with the name of Confluence? That's, to me, that's a, uh, a Wiki service that tech companies use. It's called Confluence.
But Confluence was, uh, came up during the branding exercise that we had, uh, back in January with the Arnett Muldro folks.
And so I don't understand what it's supposed to do, I guess. Is that how it's actually going to be branded, this area, as Confluence?
Well, okay, what it was known as was the Urban Renewal Site or Old Sewerage Treatment Plant Property.
Right.
And, um, the Town Center Committee kind of felt that a different name might help marketing the property.
Okay.
Rather than calling it Urban Renewal.
Okay.
And so during the branding, um, and marketing process that they went through, came up with Confluence. You know, you got the Columbia River, the Sandy River coming together there. You know, you've got a lot of things going on, and we just, it just felt like a good name for it. That's all.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll move on to that said area here.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I think it's, it's a truth universally acknowledged that this property, what we're talking about, is the critical piece in the next 20 years of development for the community. If this is effectively a once-in-a-lifetime property that we have to get right. And just as a reminder for visually seeing it, this is the property we're talking about. Uh, you'll see the labels pull up here in just a moment. You've got, of course, 84th to the north, Water Tower, which still remains. This is actually a very recent aerial image showing the removal of all buildings that was there. And actually, Commissioner Waidilla, as you, many of you know as a pilot, and actually gave us a really great bird's-eye view a few weeks ago for it, which we have to share with you. But it's looking good now, a lot better than the graffiti to the old buildings that used to be there. Um, so I'll go back to the image here momentarily, but before I do that, again, a little background on it. Uh, the city had partial ownership of the of the properties back there where the treatment plant was. In 2018, we purchased the remainder of those of those properties to get to about 20 acres in total. As you saw, there has been demolition and cleanup efforts that have taken about a year and a half since recently been completed. Right now, Arini and I have been working on a partition plan and entitlement process. Basically, what we're going to be doing is fulfilling the requirement for us to have, uh, public property ownership along the river for a future park and trail, and then remaining the less than 16 or so acres remaining, uh, for private development. So that involves of course survey. Uh, Arini and I have also been working on park and trail development, of which we received, uh, 30% design for, and now we are making our way to heading towards 60% design, which we hope to accomplish by the end of this calendar year. The idea for really moving forward with the park and trail design is set up well for getting ideally Metro-based grant funding from the Parks and Nature Bond that was approved last year. Getting the design in place now demonstrates our seriousness to build it, because they much rather fund building things rather than just studying it or designing it. So that's why we're we're going for that. It also adds prospective value and interest for any private development that that occurs. The two topics that I do want to talk about tonight, a little bit more at length, which is what we're doing is Confluence has to do with what we're calling an Opportunity Site Analysis, uh, and the concept development and further study steps that we're going to be doing. So we're going to go through that. So again, this is the site right here. And doing a concept now, you know, we don't want to, again, we don't want to tell developers what they should build, but we want to at least provide a base understanding of the community's expectations. So we're trying to understand, uh, what a community is comfortable with and also try to determine whether or not it can be supported financially. Doing a concept now will generate a test case for market analysis, and we're going to show you how that looks like with that Herford Track that we showed you, the corner property. We'll show you kind of the steps they would take there. It offers direction for a framework plan for future zoning standards. And again, this is where Planning Commission will come into play. It provides prospective developers with a starting point that has already been vetted by the community. I think that's important. Developers do not want to go into this effort if they're going to be dropping $150 to $200 million in investment without having at least a clue how the community feels about development potential in that area. It allows the public to understand scale and visual impact, and we're going to show that to you very quickly. This is a very unique property, and you can do things that historically Troutdale might be a little hesitant to do, and that's just because of how the property is situated. You can help plan for the carrying capacity of the site. You certainly don't want to overbuild it, so you have to know kind of what what the site can can handle. Um, it also sits with trail and park planning efforts, and it also, quite interestingly and very strategically, will help us engage with the outlet mall ownership and management, since they are right next door, and they hold a key, um, component to how this this will shake out. So the base assumptions that we've put into the machine, if you will, for the concept, we're looking at a four-acre dedication for parks and open space. 16 would be reserved for private development, of which 13 would be reserved for what we're calling multi-story mixed-use development, effectively ground floor, retail, or commercial with residential units above. Three of those acres would be reserved for the so-called right-of-first refusal for the outlet mall ownership to expand or add additional commercial service opportunities. There's two things we know they really, really want at the outlets, but they can't get right now. One is expanded dining opportunities, and the second is a what we call three-star or higher lodging facility right next door. So we, we think we have an opportunity to dangle that, uh, in exchange for something for better access to the site. For streets, we do see that there would be a public dedication of at least a core of the streets, but you also have the ability to reflect a grid pattern, uh, and then having connections, primary road through the outlets. The idea from looking and researching into an accurate railroad crossing at Kibbling Avenue to connect with downtown. We've already talked about the Riverfront Trail and how that would go underneath the railroad trestle right at the edge of the water there, and a pedestrian bridge potentially connecting with a prospective parking facility or garage and downtown. We're going to show that all to you on a map here in just a minute. The concept calls for 400 units, of which we would prefer them to be condo units. They are owned rather than rented. Uh, homeownership is something I know this committee and and or this commission has has referred to a preference on, of which we'd be looking at 350 market-rate units. We are factoring in also some subsidized units, and here's why. Developers have certain tax advantages that they would not be afforded otherwise if they can allocate a certain number of units to that. When you do that in this site, then it will alleviate the pressure for subsidized units in other parts of the city where it may not be as appropriate to have those units for those densities. We think you can accomplish both the high-end housing that a condo development in this location could have and can also speak to fulfilling your housing need for for these subsidized units. Looking at 150-room hotels with a possibility of a conference center, uh, looking at commercial service opportunities that which have, which could be flexible or micro-retail use, in which entrepreneurs could start in a smaller arcade-like space and then expand their businesses. So it's not necessarily, you know, you must rent 2,000 square feet of leasable area. You can have the ability to grow with it. Um, looking in then at parking, again, we've mentioned a parking garage, subterranean parking under condominium or apartment units. It's handled from a geotechnical perspective. Looking at street parking and surface parking lots, so actually total closure to about 800 spaces in total. And then the most controversial one admittedly is increasing or having a maximum building height of 75 feet. This is going to be a topic we'll show you why you want to consider it here and why it might be appropriate. We threw in the image here of the Water Tower, which is still there, and the Water Tower shows very conveniently where your height allowances are. So that first rung at 35 feet is your pretty typical height allowance right now in downtown, in Troutdale proper. If you were comfortable with going up to 70 or 75 feet, you basically go to that second rung, and that shows you that, yes, it's it's certainly an impact, but it's a situation where when you see it and you see it relative to the terrain and you see it relative to the Water Tower, it's not actually as impactful as it might be be led to. And here's why. You use your terrain of the site to your advantage. This is a cross-section view. So in this case, we're looking east. Pretend you're standing on the bridge at 257 over the railroad tracks, and you're looking east toward the bluff. The site, the Confluence site is to your left. The railroad's right ahead. You've got the rear parking area behind the stores. You've got the stores, which are at 35 feet height from the rear. You have the historic Columbia River Highway, and then, uh, stores on the other side. So this is your cross-section. So this is your cross-section. We're going to throw in the Water Tower here just for reference. So right now, you can see where those runs are where we have that labeling here. We've heard from the community that we really don't want to mess with heights in downtown, that this has been comfortable and the idea of expanding your height or doubling it is just not, not what the community wants to see. So how do we get then potential increased densities to help out the existing commercial businesses, let alone also potential commercial businesses that could come in? And what we're proposing to do is to transfer that height down below where you have a lower piece of property, where you can go higher, but the visual impact in the surrounding area is minimized because of that lower height. You have about a 40-feet difference in height, 35 feet is your regular height. If you have 35 plus 40, you get to 75, so that's where that number was derived from. And thinking about the geographic positioning of the site, you're also to the north of your downtown, meaning that you're not going to have a shadow effect that would be normally accustomed with buildings lording over a street. So the shadow effect has a really big psychological impact on how people use their downtown and how people feel comfortable in their downtown. If you're able to keep the height out of sight, but not out of mind, you can accomplish maintaining your small-town feel. And a person that's on the streets will not be able to see a taller building downtown when they are against the existing rows of the stores, unless you get to the cut in and the break in the building. At 35 feet high, meaning it would be 25 or 20 feet high from, from the street, you're not going to see it if you're standing on that side of the street. And even if it's a shorter building, like a one-story building at 15 feet high, you're still not going to be able to see the visual impact of a 75-foot tall building that's just across the railroad tracks because that's frames are differential. We did a number of visual vantage point analyses with the committee to demonstrate that. So in short, what you're doing is you're maintaining your small-town feel in your existing build downtown, and you're providing a level of density from a housing perspective to help buttress and support the existing and prospective new businesses that can come in downtown and in the Confluence site. So I showed you the cross-section. Now let me show you what, what this concept looks from a top-down view. So again, here are your labels for the property. And one of the things that was desired was the ability to see whether or not a street grid pattern could be reflected, kind of see these black marks here. That shows you kind of how a grid backbone could look like. When you throw in the trail planning efforts in here, you can see how that can, can overlay. And you'll see the trail here on subsequent slides here. And again, we talked about the idea for better access to Connect 257, and that's where that three-acre swap of property or the ability to swap property comes into play. So this, this image shows the hypothetical hotel and conference center right in this location. If you're able to trade three acres of property or plus or minus cash or whatever that, that acquisition cost might be, you then might be able to get that prime access through the outlets. And what you do when you do that is you create end-cap units for the outlets, which is critical in, in supporting dining establishments. Restaurants and fast-serve restaurants really like to be at the end. The other thing you do is you create a centralized parking solution now, because now this parking solution can accommodate all three areas. You can bridge it into downtown at the gap where the general store is from the top deck of the parking deck. It serves the Confluence site, but it also benefits then the outlet mall too. Because if I'm a visitor and I'm coming off the freeway, coming into town, and I want to park and I'm directed to the parking garage, I have to go through the outlets. Even though you're on a city street, I'd have to go through the outlets to see it, hard to get to it. So the outlets get the first chance to make an impression, even if the person is going downtown or even if they're going to the Confluence. So this is a way how you can unite through a centralized parking solution, these three currently disparate areas into kind of a single solution. And that red circle that just emerged there is a five-minute walk from that parking deck. You can see it covers all of downtown, most of the Confluence and a good chunk of the outlets. And so then when you fill in the space with potential building paths, you can see how the street grid comes into play. And, you know, this is showing a very modern situation. Maybe it's not, you know, these blocky buildings, maybe it is something at a smaller scale. But just again, for the purposes of seeing and stress testing what can work, we just ran with this potential example. And you can refer back to history and call things by their historic names, whether it be Droger's Trail, or you make a reference to this, or the Polering Mills. I mean, she, she feels, you know, there are creative ways you can do it. So this is kind of the concept that we're running with right now to test it out. Alterations of that concept can happen. So what we've done with this concept is we've created some basic expectations, which were effectively agreed upon last week by, by the Town Center Committee. The prospect of a street grid being carried over from downtown as an organizing principle for the site seems to make a lot of sense. It can help bring the site and tie it better with downtown. Maintaining the Water Tower is an iconic feature. Yes, it's going to need to be sandblasted and painted at some point, but the fact is people love that Water Tower, and it really could be something iconic for, for development. Allowing and potentially pursuing the exchange of property to gain access to the outlets. Nobody likes to lose developable property, but that access is so critical, it can have a huge impact on the appraised value of the property when the city takes it out to market. And if you're able to get the outlet mall ownership to dance with you, and then they get some benefit out of it beyond just the land, but also the access to the parking garage, which is also listed, you can have a very good symbiotic relationship with them where none was there before. Having the direct pedestrian connection with downtown via a bridge is super important. Also important, although much more difficult and will take much longer, will be figuring out a direct vehicular connection with downtown. Previous iterations show a bridge, a vehicular bridge, which takes up an enormous amount of real estate. There may be a possibility to do an at-grade crossing, but it also will take a lot of engineering time and patience for it. And the idea of having a specific architectural style, and that's not necessarily calling out one over the other. What we're basically saying is that there is a design expectation that should be applied to this property, and it should be universally applied for that property. You don't want goofy architecture or corporate architecture for one thing. It has to have a consistent look. And the idea of stepping back the building heights to help maintain that small-town aesthetic from the street view, where even if you are going four, five, or six stories high, the visual impact from the street level is reduced. And there are creative ways that architects and design professionals can do that. So that is also extremely important. I'm going to go ahead and pause here, and then I'll go into our final slides here, which will talk about the next steps that we're doing with it and how planning commission is going to start interfacing with these efforts. I'll take any questions.
Questions? No? Okay, see none, let's go ahead and roll on.
So where do we go from here? Oh, we're going to do an action planning project for this concept. And actually, we're going to work with a firm who we are already working with to test out this concept and other ones that have yet to be developed. They will use the basic expectations as their guidebook, but they will also test out seeing how townhomes might apply. Other types of commercial uses maybe aside from a hotel. They'll look at a couple of other development options and, and let us know what can pencil out. In doing so, this process will also involve engaging with six, six developers who may have a potential interest in developing the sites. These are people who are very well-connected with the development community, who have handled these types of projects before. Getting their feedback is going to be quite critical. And then ideally getting their interest is also critical when we take this to market. We've been working with a gentleman, his name is Abe Parkes. He's a consultant, he helped advise the city as it was going through its, its decisions on whether to buy out the rest of the property. He'll be continued to be involved. But what this, what this action planning project does is it generates economic data and initial rates of return. For 15 years, we've had lots of pretty pictures. We've had lots of pie-in-the-sky projections. We've never had concepts that have actually been tested out for these, they work financially. And this level of analysis gives us a barometer check. It synchronizes your design preferences with the economic reality. And therefore, if what you're wanting doesn't pencil out, then understanding what you may have to incentivize or may have to give up might be important. On the other hand, if you are well, well endowed and you can, you can scale back what your, what your development assumptions may be, that might be a better problem to have. Then you have a, a development that might be a little more copacetic with that small-town feel. But bottom line is, when you're talking about a nine-figure project like this, there's going to be a lot of investment and a lot of understanding that needs to happen, and this work will help us get to that. The good news is we have a template to see how this works. And we've done this with the Herford tracks, the one at the northwest quarter, 257 and Historic Highway. I'm going to show you just a couple of slides to show you how this works. Much like we did with the Urban Renewal site, again, we identified for the Herford tracks our three preferred land use classifications for that property. Commercial service, community service use, which is basically public uses like a city hall or library and mixed use. We gave that information to these consultants to start evaluating. The consultants then took and created four very initial concepts. They, they took it and they gave it back to staff, and they also provided it to the property owner and say, hey, what do you think? What do you like? What do you don't like? What do you want to refine? From that feedback, it was whittled down further to two options. The two options here are just, again, very hypothetical at this point. The option two, which we kind of circled here right now for the purposes of studying it, has emerged as the better option. And the reason for it is because when you run the numbers from the initial rate of return, based on the development parameters you've assigned, this has a much higher chance of being financially successful than that first option right there. So the idea then is, okay, well, you have option two. Your target would want to be 12%. How do you get them to 12%? And that's where you talk about, do you make adjustments to the code? Does the developer apply some variances? Are there financial incentives? Are there opportunities for construction cost savings? That's the type of level of analysis that's being used on the hypothetical at that track. And that is the same type of analysis we've been doing with that Confluence site. Understanding what it's going to take to make a development that's allowed. It's never been done before in the 15 years we've had this. It's time to do it now if we want to see action moving forward on it. This effort is now going to be included then. The results of the action plan will help with a framework plan. The framework plan will also include recommended zoning changes, and that's where this body's particular role will come in. A plan will be established, we will finalize a survey, and we will work on branding and marketing packages, and we will get ideally an updated appraisal. While we're doing that, we're also going to engage with the outlet mall ownership, and we will also need to engage with the Governor's Regional Solutions Team. Basically, this is a surgical team from Business Oregon that comes in and says, we can try to help with a problem you have, community. And the problem we have is the railroad, in getting the access across to connect downtown with the site. And we think that the Governor's Regional Solutions Team is going to be critical in making that happen. As we're doing that, as we finalize these documents, we take this effort to the market. And I think it's not without the realm of the possibility that we start marketing this thing for sale and development interest within six to nine months, as long as all things are moving on this track. I'm going to go back to that slide here, but I want to talk specifically about the role of planning commission and where you guys are going to fit into this puzzle here. The Town Center Plan is going to be calling for certain things where you will have to look to consider future amendments to both the COPS Plan and the Development Code, as well as the corresponding maps that you have. What you see in red is probably going to be your first case, which will probably come in fall, late fall. And that'll be the consideration of establishing a new zoning district for the Urban Renewal site. That includes not just the city-owned properties, but also the outlet mall properties too. So that'll probably be your first step from just giving you a sneak preview. Some of the other bullet points that you see here will also talk about some of the other things that will be likely to be accomplished or likely that you will see. And again, these are all Type 4 here, and so these are going to rely on your recommendations for City Council to take this approach into action. And as far as the long-range planning actions, there are parallel projects that will require your involvement in and review and oversight in. The first is Main Streets on Halsey, and I will touch on that with my department report. We're working right now on that code-ordered project, which is similar to the Herford track information we just had. There may be some suggested text amendments that come as a result of that. Again, suggestions, not mandatory text requirements, you should know that. The next phase of that Main Streets on Halsey project will be to look at changes to street design profiles. If you recall that opportunity site map, we showed eight corridors, three of which are on that Halsey corridor, which include Halsey and the historic Columbia River Highway. If you are trying to fulfill your vision statement, you're trying to get it to the point where the 82-year-old woman can get around town comfortably, or the 12-year-olds can ride their bike comfortably, you're going to need to change your street profile. And this is a very critical component for how planning commission should handle that. We're going to be re-looking at the capital improvement plan, which we haven't done for five years, and looking at taking the opportunity corridor investments into that CIP. So that way, projects can be SDC-eligible, you can receive those assistance development charge funds that has been generated from the development that occurs. There'll be some tangents to the Parks Master Plan of those 12 opportunity sites. Three of those facilities were park facilities. So that'll be something that you will have an opportunity to review in the Parks Master Plan process. And then for transportation, there'll be a number of things. TST updates, increase involvement in the VICE hub establishment. We had talked about deferring a parking study, but increasingly, and I'm sure many of you have seen it if you've been in downtown, we have not just a parking issue, but a loading issue or an unloading issue that is increasingly becoming problematic as people will be doing more and more delivery services, more and more takeout, and especially when you think about ride sharing or autonomous vehicles, you better figure out loading as much as you better figure out parking. So it'll be a parking and loading study. Rail service and tourism, this is another interesting nugget that we learned about. The state of Oregon is planning to think about re-establishing passenger rail service on the south side of the river. That just came out in February. If they do that, one of the places for the Amtrak station or the state transportation station that they would use would be here in Troutdale. They've identified it as a future station location. Okay, well, that's, that's cool. Now, thinking about the railroad and how they're used and how they've historically been used, you have a beautiful Columbia River Gorge just to the east of you. You have Multnomah Falls that are 14 miles away. Do you have an opportunity to create a heritage or tourism-based railroad amenity there too? And in that case, having a station right next to your downtown, right in your Confluence site, presents a dynamo opportunity for you. And the state has a little headache on its handle of the gorge too. It has traffic management issues, it has congestion issues. Yeah, they run a bus right now, but if they can partner with a rail provider to provide railroad service to some of these trailheads or state parks or amenities, you can work on that with your Governor's Regional Solutions Team and Troutdale's launching off plane. You have a pretty incredible opportunity there. Maybe the state also ships in a million or two for your parking garage that's going to be needed to help handle that visitor. So these are the opportunities that we're trying to identify here. And the last one, and this is for fun, consider a golf cart zone. You're not going to be riding a golf cart in February, but think about golf carts in this perspective. It's worth at least studying before you laugh me out of the room. I know Kenny's already laughing at me. It's an existing technology. A lot of the things we talk about in technology are for future trends. This is an existing technology. If you're on a golf cart, you can have a five-minute circle from anywhere in that town center, and you cover your whole area, not to mention Edgeville, not to mention if you needed to go that way, Wood Village. A golf cart can legally operate on the street right now in the travel lane where the streets are 25 miles an hour or less. Our downtown Main Street has a speed limit, which nobody follows, but it is a speed limit of 20 miles an hour. A golf cart can safely, legally, technically operate on it right now. If you consider a multi-use path for higher-speed areas, like the approach to Halsey, you can do that. A number of communities are starting to figure that out and, and look now. And it's not just in Arizona or the Carolinas or And it's not just in Arizona or the Carolinas or Florida. This is happening now in suburban Illinois, suburban Minnesota, suburban Atlanta. There, there are places where suburban communities are starting to look at that technology and seeing, hey, if people can get what they need and can get around town. Oh, and by the way, if we, you know, create new development and maybe when you buy a condo or you buy a town home, you get a free golf cart with it and you incentivize and encourage the use of that alternative form of transportation, it has made a psychological difference in how people view their town. It also has contributed, by the way, based on news reports and testimony, to small town feel. The ability for people to get around their community comfortably at a safer, lower speed. There are things that Metro likes about it. It's lower cost, so it checks on the equity box. It's lower speed, it checks off on the safety situation if there's a vehicle and pedestrian problem. They're electric, it touches on their climate goals for reduced emissions. And in your post-COVID environment and given are all of our annual breaks about how limited transport transit and in particular bus service out here, this provides still the flexibility for people to get around independently where they don't have to be in a bus with a bunch of people masked, but they have the ability then to get around and we introduce a much more localized, demand responsive transportation network. I'm going to end it on golf carts, um, because you have, have to have something to smile about or laugh about, but I think you should at least study it and that, that's what, what we believe will be, will include in the plan. And this committee or this commission will be a part of that if we move that forward. With that, I am done and I'd ask to take more of your questions.
Commissioner Glenn.
Is it okay to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Does it have to be just golf carts or could it also be like the rentable scooters?
It could be that too. What we're finding with the rentable scooters is that they are quite disposable. A lot of them get chucked in the river and, uh, a lot of the initial experimenting has really subsided. But yeah, I mean, like if you're thinking of like a multipurpose trail, for instance, surely an electric scooter can more easily and more comfortably and safely operate on that same path as opposed to being in a travel lane.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I appreciate the thought that's being put into this and like to encourage, uh, it to continue further.
I guess I would say this has been quite a project. And, um, first thing I'd like to do is acknowledge Chris Damian, uh, his excellent leadership skills and, um, and efforts that he's put into the town center committee to accomplish this. And I also want to acknowledge his entire staff and especially him and the work that he's done, um, to get us to this point. And if you've been around for a while and you know that this property's been a problem for quite some time, and, um, I'm excited because the city has gotten it back, they've got it cleaned up and I think it actually has a chance now. And we're going to have to do some things, um, but I also think some other people are going to have to do some things too. You know, I just had say on golf carts, I look at it, Metro wants to float a $7 billion transportation package, but we'd be buying people golf carts. I think there's some other areas that can step up and help us with some of the initiatives that we, we may want to do. I also, um, am very supportive of the fact that we're doing some economic analysis so that we don't end up like the Columbia River Crossing and spend a bunch of money on something that can't be built. I think we're a little smarter than that. And it's also exciting to try to partner with the outlet malls rather than fly back to New York and tell them that we're going to blow a hole through the middle of their complex, uh, which I don't think got us very far the first time. But, um, I'm excited for the effort, uh, that that group has gone through and what they've come up with and then to see how that goes as it goes through the planning commission and the urban renewal agency board and all of those, you know, to come to fruition. Pretty cool. Not very many people have 20 acres in their downtown that they get to develop.
Riverfront at that.
Pardon me?
Riverfront at that.
Yeah. And you know, I've kind of said you get one chance to screw this up, but I think we already took that when we put a sewage treatment plant down there. That was probably, um, not the best foresight to have, but I think some of what we're coming up with now could be pretty interesting. And some of this already has been shown to the development community, so they've already looked at some of this and not felt that we're totally on track or anything. I think that, you know, there may be some, some opportunities to do some things. I was going to ask too, how is the rate of return calculated?
How is it calculated? I don't have the full mathematics behind me, but I believe it's through a regression model where they make certain presumptions from a residential point of view. If you're talking about sales, obviously what the market can command per a sales price. If you're talking about lease, what your prevailing lease average would be for, I believe in this case, was usually a two bedroom unit that was applied to a condo or apartment. Commercial square footagees were based on, um, the area average with an escalator because this would be considered newer construction. Newer construction usually suggests a higher square foot price per. Right. I can give you kind of the full metrics on it, but I, I think these numbers are pretty good. But they also assume two other things too. They also assume what we would call a quote unquote vanilla developer, a developer that may not have a lot of collateral as far as, or access capital as, you know, maybe some of the more invested developers in the area. So, uh, it also depends on what a developer can get financing. So these are based on, you know, pretty standard bank notes and bank loan opportunities at that point.
I think it's a great opportunity. It's going to take us to a place where we haven't been and it's going to take us to some places where we have been. You know, you think about it, um, we haven't had to do any of the master plans for a while, so we'll get to do those again. It's always exciting times and we'll do some text amendments. Hardly waiting for that. But it'll be good. I think this is going to be a great thing for Troutdale. It's a great opportunity. Again, thank you for all the hard work that you've put in over these years.
Thank you for the kind words and kudos also to Chair Staffordson. He also chairs the town center committee and, uh, I don't know if we're going to stop on that, not trying to be totally, but you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours. But it's been, it's been a difficult committee at times, gives a number of people and diversion opinions, but I think you would be really proud of people who had not talked to each other, never imagined would have talked to each other, now agreeing on concepts and ideas and have a collective, uh, presumptive vision for, for the community. It's been really rewarding to see that.
Frankly, it's been great to see how people have evolved over the past few years, you know, to understand somebody else's point of view other than just assuming that they're Any other questions for us?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, this is.
Yes.
If I may, my, my apologies, I was, uh, so focused on this map about the urban renewal area access point, I was taking notes, must have missed one of the, one of the first statements, so my apology, I need to preface the question with apology. Does the city currently own the Columbia Gorge Outlet Side? Does the city, is the city projected to buy the sign? Where are we at this point?
No, we don't own the, the, the outlet mall itself. We have access that goes around to the north side of the mall and would access the property from there. We have access, it's just not great access.
Okay, but we don't own it. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
That's true. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, um, a couple of notes for you folks, um, related to upcoming items. Your next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be July 15th. You have a hearing for that and that is of course for the type four hearing on the two code amendment items we were talking about. One was for the storage facilities. The other was for the signs. One note on the signs, we, uh, at the last meeting, we went through a pretty thorough exercise to look at what other changes you wanted to see, which included some definition changes. The other item that we didn't cover, and it might've been because we were late, but we should have, uh, highlighted because it's been an issue that has come up before, and that is how do you want to handle setbacks for monument or ground based signs off the right of way? You've had two variance applications for people wanting to get the sign closer. Right now, you, you limit it to what the building setback is, but men, in many occasions, your building setback is so far back and then your sign is restricted in such a way from the square footage, it renders the sign not as great. So the opportunity to allow for signs within that setback where it wouldn't affect clear vision entering and exiting the property or it wouldn't affect any easements on the property, is something that we are going to also insert into the text amendments. So when you see it, we didn't want to throw wind because we hadn't discussed it, but it has been an issue that we know you have wanted to at least address it. And while you're in this chapter already addressing other sign code issues, we felt it was appropriate to include that on the 15th.
So for clarification, we're talking about in the setback, not in the right of way.
Correct. Yeah, these are signs that would be, you know, if your, let's say, if your building setback was 50 feet off the right of way, can you allow, and, and right now, your sign standards say signs must respect that same distance. Can you actually, would it be okay to allow for signs to be X number of feet, but within that 50 foot area, within that front yard, if you will? That's what we're going to propose to you. We'll cover it a little bit more at length at the hearing. And again, this is a hearing, you can always continue it if you need to have more thought on it, or you can make that recommendation and then go to backboard at the council because the council ultimately has to approve.
Questions on that?
Is there any reason where, or I mean, if a building is being set back 50 feet, why do we have to give them all 50 feet? Wouldn't there be a reason that they're already being set back somewhere? And to me, that's definitely going to, if you've got that setback, then depending upon, if they put it right up to the edge at the, you know, zero to two feet area, then you would still have some view impediment as you're pulling out or something. I don't know.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
You, you have a clear vision standard that has to be met first.
Okay.
And who decides? The sign can't be, the sign can't be put in an area where it blocks your view from, from any direction. Such as, you know, like if you have it by entrance to a building, it can't impede your ability to see going in and out along the same lines. It can't impede traffic's view either. So that's the first thing that has to happen is it has to meet the, uh, we call it, kind of call it the triangle. And it has to meet that standard first, um, if it meets the setback. I will just tell you, there's a lot of places that there, it's a zero setback for a sign if you meet the clear vision standard.
Okay.
The, the other, excuse me, sorry, I said, the other regulating factor is also the location of public facility easements. Some communities will also say you can't also build a sign within that easement. And along a lot of our street frontages, we usually have anywhere between five to eight foot wide utility easement on the private property. So that kind of already creates an artificial five to eight foot setback for the sign. Even if your building setback is say 20 or 50 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Or, another option is they can put the, it over the easement and then they're liable for replacing it if it has to be. Right. They have to, because some people are like, you know what, I want it there and if I have to pay for it, you know, to move it or replace it, I'll do it to have a sign there.
What, what we'll do for the staff report, we will go ahead and put a proposal into the draft amendment and the staff report will explain our rationale for what we propose and we will give you other options to consider. Our Amber from our staff has done, uh, some analysis of how other communities have handled it, so we'll include that rubric in the staff report. So if you don't like what we propose, you can always just say, I rather like it how this other community does or this seems to make more sense. And then you can make that, that amendment to the text amendment proposal tonight.
Okay, perfect.
Great. The, um, now I mentioned that with your next regular meeting, there has been a request from the Main Streets on Halsey group. Again, this is the same group that just did the, the same type of analysis, that market analysis we were talking about. That same project is also talking about that code audit. And if, if you recall the slide where we talked about future long-term planning steps, the idea that this Main Streets on Halsey project may have considerations for suggested code amendments on how you handle commercial storefronts in particular. The Main Streets group is requesting a three city planning commission workshop, which would occur on, uh.
You ever seen cats be heard?
I'm sorry?
You ever seen cats be heard before?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm passing it along, on Wednesday, July 8th at 6 o'clock. Now, we understand that's a different time. We also understand that it's just past the holiday and we understand it could be an unwildy meeting. However, I think it's going to be pretty important, if you have the ability to attend, that you do. For one, you'll get a much better understanding on this particular project for starters. Second, you can see the consultants who are going to be working with us on the economic analysis for the Confluence Tract. You can see them and have that discussions with them too. And then third, it will give you a sneak preview as far as what their suggested code of code amendments, and I say suggested, not mandated, suggested code amendments might be when they come back to present to you at some point this fall. You have a much better chance of providing feedback and direction at that meeting if you can be there.
And they're going to have those broken out by municipality, correct?
I don't know the exact work, work. I, I, at this point, I do not know how they're intending to structure that meeting. I think what they're looking at is they understand, I think it's been pretty well communicated to them that each community has its own planning commission, its own city council, its own expectations for development. The reason for the three city approaches is because we were all going to get that same level of technical analysis from the consultants, but we all shift in our little piece for the money. So they can, they can present options and they can say, you know, this might work better in Troutdale, but it wouldn't work in Fairview. And, you know, it's a take it or leave it type thing. They're providing us the analysis. Ultimately, it's this commission and this council's discretion of whether or not he wants to incorporate any of our.
I just think to be effective, they should look at changes that they would want to make specifically to our code and specifically to Wood Village and specifically to Fairview. And then say, okay, based on your code, we're thinking these things and, and it's not just like, you should do this to your code when we've, may have already done it.
They, I, I think they'll, they'll meet you halfway for sure. I think that they, when they have done a code audit with all three cities respective codes, they've looked at, in Troutdale, we've given three zoning districts to look at where they, where they would look at these things and say, hmm, this, this may be a problem or potentially a hindrance for how a site may or may not be developed or redeveloped. Here's some considerations if you do want to see development at this current zoning district, here's some considerations on what you might want to do. And those same considerations could be universally applied, you know, it may be the same issues that Wood Village or Fairview has, but it may be also unique to Troutdale. So I think they're, they're planning to do it, but have a structured meeting up.
Can they give us any, um, recommendations on changing the code? Did Salem change while?
Yeah, good luck with that. That's right.
And then the other thing I was going to say is if you're having all three planning commissions, that's probably going to need to be a work session?
It's a work session.
And not need, okay.
Correct. Yeah, so again, I don't believe we'll have a quorum requirement for, you know, having the discussion. the discussion. If you can be there, great. If not, that's understandable. Certainly, if there's materials that come out of it, we would distribute it to all commissions, so they would be able to see it. And we would intend to debrief you on the 17th, or excuse me, 15th.
There is safety in numbers.
Will you send us a calendar invite for that?
We will.
Yeah, that's the official. There is safety in numbers.
Right there with you.
And given our COVID situation, it would be almost certain. Which actually leads into my next report. The county has received the green light from the state to go into Phase 1 on Friday. At the moment, from the city office perspective, it does not change anything from whether our offices are open to the public. We are at work, we are serving the public, but we are not forecasting any changes to how our office doors are open until July 6th. That's Monday after, after the morning. So really, we're looking right now at Monday, the 6th, as the best-case, best possible chance for us to reopen our doors for the public to. If you were inspired by some of the Town Center Committee items tonight, they will be meeting at this time next Wednesday. You're more than welcome to join. We'll be happy to provide the credentials to log into that if you want to sit in on that discussion. And certainly, if you have any feedback, we'll provide this slideshow to you all as well. As I said, I know we've covered a lot. We would love to have your feedback provided in email directly to staff and not shared or.
We would actually like your feedback, so.
Marini, do you have anything you'd like to add from, from your perspective?
Oh, I think you covered my, covered pretty much everything that's going on right now.
Thank you, Associate Planner. And with that, Mr. Chair, we yield back to you for Commissioner's comments.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Priggett, anything? Okay. Commissioner Glanz?
I'm just wondering with all of the Black Lives Matter, has anything much been going on in Troutdale in terms of protests or statements or?
There was a protest, not last Friday, two Fridays ago, that was at Mayor's Square. It was attended by the sheriff's office and several, you know, county dignitary, school district was involved. It was a very peaceful event, and the sheriff's office did not report any complaints or requests for it.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Just, I will not be able to attend that workshop. I'm going to be on vacation that week.
Okay. Have a great vacation, sir. Mr. Allen?
I was just going to mention on signs that I believe the council was trying to cut down on sign pollution and improve the inviting aesthetics of the town to make it more desirable to be here.
Yeah, signs are always a real fun one for us. Okay, Commissioner Ramoni?
Welcome, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilcox?
No, nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Wydell?
Nothing.
Okay. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn on second.
A motion by Commissioner Priggett, second by Commissioner Glanz, to adjourn for this evening, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you all very much. Have a great evening, and we will see you on the 8th.
Bye, everyone.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.